Shut this bad boy off.
Oh.
Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Thursday, March 14th, 2019. Please stand for the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda is opening comments. Ms. Lombard?
I'm all set.
Mr. Barrell? You're all set?
Yep.
Okay, same here. Okay, next is approved February 14th Board of Selectmen meeting minutes.
And move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the minutes of February 14th, 2019. Second. Second.
Discussion. I'd like to say to Bobby Joe, you did a very good job on this. Thank you. Very well done.
You read my part again.
I know. Richie was supposed to...
Yeah. You were a little slow.
I don't think it was that at all.
I know.
Next on the agenda, Dan.
We need to vote.
Oh, you want to vote?
We need to vote again.
All in favor?
Aye.
An animus vote. Well done. On Citizens Forum, the last meeting was in fact a month ago, and in our discussion period, some citizens actually got up and spoke again. That was my mistake. After Citizens Forum, we should not have that much citizen involvement in a business meeting. Again, that was me, but I thought it was appropriate because some people had some things to say. So beginning Citizens Forum, please.
Hi, Alice Court, Seven Valley Road. I wanted to talk about two things quickly. One is the, whether there's any information about financials coming from Northeastern. I understand that people from Town Hall are trying to get that information from Northeastern about how many scholarships were awarded and so forth, but I haven't received any information that, you know, is clearly, you know, true or absolute or confirmed by either the town or by Northeastern about, again, I think they gave $25,000 at some point, but whether they give it annually since 2017 or just once, I'm still not sure. So I don't know how to go about having a compilation of what their contributions have been over the 50 years and who to approach with that. But the second thing I wanted to talk about actually has to do with that last conversation where we jumped up a couple of times. And I wanted to hand you each something, and then I'll talk about it. This has to do with the discussion about whether or not the new Nahant Wetlands bylaw had any effect on Northeastern's plans. And I know Kristin Kent does an amazing job, but she thought that that vote had nothing to do with Northeastern. And I have to confess, I partly supported it because of the effect it was going to have on the Northeastern plans. And Mr. Lombard was under the impression that it had had absolutely no effect on the East Point design. And if you go back to the December 11th meeting at minute 28, the architect from Payette, Mr. Robert Schefner, was developing the overlay to show what effect each law has on the restrictions. And the very last overlay he did, and this I took from a screen print from my computer, so it was a little fuzzy, so I retyped the text on it, but this is, the drawing is his screen print of the slide. And what's in yellow is the new Nahant Wetlands bylaw restricted area that puts that land on East Point under the oversight of the Conservation Commission. And because that area is, whoops, hello, is very difficult to see, on the second page, I colored it in blue for you. So you can see that there's actually a very substantial amount of the East Point part that was not affected before, but only became affected by the new Nahant Wetlands Buffer Zone bylaw. So it is incorrect to say that it had no effect. And if the law is repealed, my understanding is that all that area becomes open for Northeastern to do what they will without any oversight of a Nahant Commission at all. So I, I know that the previous laws affected 390 homeowners on Nahant to have to put in a permit to the Conservation Commission because they're within 100 feet, and that the new Nahant bylaw added 70 more people. And I know Mr. Barrell, at least one of your properties, is affected by that. And I, and that's hard. But I really hope that those 70 people can understand that that inconvenience that they will go through really gives Nahant citizens a huge protection regarding the East Point site. That that, all that area in blue, the protection is lost if the bylaw is repealed. That's my understanding. And maybe the planning board meeting next week will also go into that and confirm that. But I think it's pretty clear. And if you listen to Mr. Schefner's comments on minute 28 or so of that December 11th meeting, he comments that it was a big effect that restricted their designs for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. I'm Marie Pazinski. I live at 36 Swallow Cave Road. And I'd like to discuss something that was brought up at the last Board of Selectmen meeting two weeks ago. Selectman Chesley Taylor stated that he wanted to create a parking area on Nahant Road along the stretch parallel to Forty Steps Beach, and that he would like to accomplish this before his term ends on April 27th. I want to express that for several reasons, I think this is a very bad idea, and from a public safety standpoint, a very dangerous idea. This area sees a very large increase in pedestrian, bicycle, in automobile traffic during the non-winter months, and allowing parking would only encourage more traffic and idling in a residential neighborhood. Nahant Road has a 90-degree turn approaching the Forty Steps area. Walkers, bicyclists, and pedestrians need to exercise extreme caution from unseen traffic when they cross the road in that area. And increased cars will create a more hazardous situation in an area that has already had as many as five cars go over the guardrail there at Forty Steps. They went over the cliff, cliff down onto the beach. Mr. Taylor suggests a 15-minute time limit for the parking, and having the Nahant Police Department responsible for monitoring cars 24/7 would place an unrealistic burden on the town police force. In addition, coastal erosion has impacted Forty Steps Beach in recent years, including the slope area above the beach. So it is not in the town's interest to place more of a physical burden in this area. The added traffic, the cars idling, will increase noise and pollution in a natural resource area. A few of us over the weekend thought we would ask the opinion of other Nahant citizens. So at this time, I'd like to share with you a citizens' letter of concern, which respectfully requests that the Board of Selectmen continue to designate as a no-parking zone the area on Nahant Road from the property line abutting the beach at 386 Nahant Road to the end of Nahant Road at the junction of Swallow Cave Road. This letter is signed by 126 citizens, many of whom do not live along that stretch of road and yet are overwhelmingly concerned about public safety. I ask that you consider the sentiments of these Nahant citizens and keep the area along Forty Steps Beach a no-parking zone. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, can I speak?
Sure.
The boards agreed not to do anything up there, okay? And based on the police chief, he's make his recommendation that there should be no parking in that area. So we've, I've agreed with the police chief, and I'm, we're not going to move on that, the parking, okay?
That's, that's just Mr. Lombard talking. I have not officially talked to the police chief or the town administrator or anyone. It was an idea thrown out. That's it. So these two can talk to anyone they want in town. I'm going through the town administrator to look into it. And I'll go with what he says.
And I haven't heard, I haven't talked to anybody either.
He hasn't said anything, so.
It actually caught me by surprise the last, at that last meeting. I had no idea that was even going to come up. So, and we didn't vote on it, so nothing voted on. But if I have to, I will. Mr. Mahoney?
Hi, Bill Mahoney, 171 Willow Road. We had that meeting on December 11th regarding the presentations that, from Northeastern, and I haven't heard much from, from the Selectmen as to the negotiations, what's going on between you and Northeastern. I know you said it was going to be kind of open when you took chairmanship regarding this, and we, I'd like to know what's going on a little more. Also, there was a, what do we call it? Citizens were allowed to make comments, I think, either that evening or on, on the internet regarding choices, et cetera. I haven't heard feedback on that. I'd like to see if we could get something out to the public on that.
Get that further, Mr. Town Administrator?
Yep.
Can I just, Alice, you had mentioned that you wanted to know what Northeastern gives us, and has given us over the years. I think they give us four scholarships, and they give the school $25,000 a year. And they've been, how long have they been doing the $25,000? I think since the, I think since the override, the yes/no vote, which was a while ago, they, they came through and they gave, they funded art music. So that's going to be at least...
We...
10 years?
I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's 10. I want to say it's about, I want to say it's like six or seven, but I'd have to double check.
What's that? Okay, so, all right. So that's...
Five years.
No, not, not for the money to the school.
There's only two scholarships. And honestly, I don't consider, I don't consider scholarships, Billy, a payment, because scholarships don't cost them anything. So I'm in agreeance with that. I don't think, I think scholarships are just a throwaway answer.
I think that's the trickiest part, is that we hear four half scholarships, two half scholarships, so it keeps changing, and that's why to...
And again, I don't care about that. I really, I don't, I really don't care. Let me, let me make it clear. There's only two scholarships, half scholarships been given, not four. It's only been two. And there's $25,000 to the Johnson School. That's all they've given us for the last few years. And we haven't negotiated with anybody.
If I can just...
Besides, I mean, everybody thinks that we're negotiating. We're not. I, I haven't negotiated with anybody. I know I've been accused of it. Absolutely not.
All right.
Not with me, no.
All right. People can get up and talk at the mic.
If I can just clarify on the scholarships. The offer, what Northeastern offers, is two half scholarships, two full-time students that are Nahant residents. It's based on, I believe it's based on the, the credits that they get. So in other words, if they are studying abroad, they're not getting a scholarship at that time. That being said, I don't know if, for the, every year that they've been offering that, that two students have actually received it. So, you know, I want to be clear that it may not be that two students have received scholarships every year, although that's what Northeastern has offered the town.
For that, I'm not sure exactly, the, the students receiving the scholarship, I think either one of them, or maybe both, have already graduated. So I'm not sure if the new scholarships have been presented from the list of Nahant residents.
Yeah, we don't, we, the town, don't, we don't hold on to that information.
Right.
Northeastern has it. I can, I will say that, you know, I've heard some complaints about the process of how to apply for it and how to get the information about it. And I think we should have a conversation with Northeastern regardless of what happens with this, in this town.
Yep.
And this expansion. That process should be simplified. It should be more clear. People, the resident, potential students of Nahant going to Northeastern should know how to apply for it and how to, and, and what, you know, what the criteria is in order to get it. It, you know, that's something that we should have a conversation with them about.
Okay.
Regardless.
All right.
Thank you. Michelle Capano, 29 Ocean Street in Nahant. Just a point of clarification around Northeastern in terms of their contribution to the town. So under pilots, if you reviewed them, there are two components. One is cash. We get $25,000, as I understand, every year that funds a part of a teacher's salary. The other component is community benefits. The dialogue that you just were having around community benefits are the two half scholarships for students that educationally qualify. And I think Mr. Barletta raised a very good point that the process and the communication and notification to Nahant student residents probably needs to be improved. But I would just keep those two points separate, community benefits and cash payments. So it's really important. Along with that, it would be nice to know what other community benefits. Because as I understand, in 2017, we had to pay for three hands-on educational classes at the Johnson School, and that was funded by the Nahant Education Foundation. So I don't deem that as a community benefit. So if there's other community benefits, I think they should be highlighted, so we understand what they are.
Michelle, one of those sessions Northeastern, they were charging $500 for that program to be presented to the Johnson School students.
Right. And it came out, as I understand, in the annual report, Nahant Education Foundation paid for those. That's what was in the annual report, so that's what I'm referencing.
No, when I, we found out about it, I told Northeastern that we're not going to pay, and they're going to present that to the students. It's the same year that I asked for the scholarships, okay? And they gave us, you know, I didn't follow up as well because I thought it was two full scholarships, not half. They caught me by surprise with the half scholarships. And the $25,000 was for the program over there for the music and, they've been still paying that, but it's, you know, it's, it's, they have not been a good neighbor to us, okay? They just have not been. And as far as negotiate, we have not negotiated, Billy, at all. We haven't talked to them. We haven't talked to anybody. I know I haven't. I know the board hasn't. It's, we had a lead team of the chairman and the town administrator leading the team, but we, we have a meeting because we've been too busy, they've been too busy with the town budget and the special town meeting and the override and everything else. So Northeastern's been put on the back burner for now. They have not made a move. They haven't, you know, filed any permits or any request for permits or anything like that. So that's where it stands, Billy. No one's done anything yet, okay? I want to let you know. We, we have not met with them, and of course, we're...
Bill, Bill, could you come up, please?
Yeah, I, I just recall a month, month and a half ago at a, at a meeting that you had heard they were going to come forth with, with something and also some type of financial deal or something to that effect. That's the last I heard of.
Yeah, we haven't received anything at this point.
Yeah.
But I, but, but yeah, they, they did say they intended on sending us some type of completed document of community benefits that they would be offering, but we haven't received it.
Deborah Vander Slice, 368 Nahant Road. When you say you haven't met with them, I just wanted to ask for clarification. Have you had phone calls with them and not actually met in person?
No.
No.
No, we, the main objective here is through the town administrator and not lawyer.
Okay. And did I miss here, but at a few meetings back, and Tony, you could answer this, did you say there were 18 discussions with them? I thought I heard that when I was watching a meeting.
Leading, we had a, a number of meetings with Northeastern leading up to the December 11th public meeting, which was basically to get that organized and have that presentation put together, make sure that they were addressing concerns and comments that were raised by the community, and making sure that their presentation was as clear as possible. And I think we did meet with them once or twice afterwards as a follow-up. But we haven't, but Richie's right, I haven't, I haven't met with them in quite some time because we've been focused, so focused on budget.
Yeah, I understand. I'm just wondering, given they presented three options, what the next, if you know, what the next step would be in terms of what they've arrived at, given feedback from the survey people I know have met with them. Jeff Trussell asked me to meet with him in December after that meeting. I know they've gotten feedback. And I was just wondering, because people, myself included, just want to know what's going on, and will there be another meeting with them to show what they're proposing as their kind of final solution, or do we even know that?
Nothing's planned right now. I think, I think that's something that we could definitely talk about. I mean, if they, if they file something with the building department, if they apply for a building permit.
Yep.
That'll be based on, I would assume, one of those design elements, and I guess we could ask them. I would defer to the board, I guess, but I think that that's, there's nothing planned right now.
Okay, thank you.
My problem with that, for, for your answer, my problem with that is if they apply on a Thursday or Friday. I think their next step is they're going to apply, because I know, I had some good feedback from the Keep Nahant Wild people who thought the same thing. If they do it on a Thursday or Friday and we have to wait a week to let the people know before a meeting. So we're going to work out, as soon as, as soon as whatever happens, happens, the town should know right away.
I think they'll know right, I think people...
Well, in this town, everyone, in this town, everyone has their own way of looking at things, so.
They haven't applied. I haven't talked to them. You said that Jeff Trussell wants to meet with you. Want you to meet with him?
Oh, no, I did. I met with him a week before Christmas.
What'd he say?
Oh...
Please tell us, because we, you know, you probably know more than me.
Oh, no. We basic, well, I know Jeff because Bob and I volunteer for swim and we clean the beach. So I've known him for a while, and we have a good relationship. However, he just asked me to come by, and we talked about his solutions, and I personally disagree about building on the hill. I don't disagree with science. I don't disagree with maybe enhancing what they have, and I just shared my opinions with him.
So what's his solution?
Oh, no, I don't know, I don't, I don't know his solution, but when I, he's very, he's a good guy. But he's, you know, he said to me when I left that we would just agree to disagree. But it was a very pleasant exchange, and I think he wants to hear from citizens, but I also think he wants citizens to support his options, obviously. So we just agreed to disagree, and there's no animosity there.
Well, they did, in December, they made that presentation. And quite frankly, we had told them before that they, they better come through with, I mean, I think it was a big difference in television and the way they presented it. Now, whether you agree with it, with their options or not, they did a good presentation because they had, behind that curtain, I think they had, it was full of video equipment and whatever. So the people that actually saw it at home, it was clear. It was very clear. There are TV screens everywhere. So I thought, I mean, again, I can't agree with, I, I don't know what people want. I mean, nobody, nobody wants a building up there. All I can say is they made a decent presentation.
I agree they made a decent presentation, and I agree that they tried to come back with something they thought might appease us or they'd get buy-in for. And I think they really tried. But I think for many reasons that I don't need to go into, and I think we all know, there are those of us who don't really want to see the hill above the bunker tampered with for mostly environmental reasons. And so I left Jeff saying, maybe you could think out of the box and just kind of blue-sky it. If you weren't to build on that hill, what would your solution be? And he kind of said, oh, we spent so much money on the architects, you know? And I was like, go find a solo practitioner and bring him up here and just say, hey, this is what I want, and the people, 1,700 people don't want it up there, what would you suggest? So I don't know if he's pursued it. I haven't spoken to him, but I want to reiterate, there was no animosity, and we did agree to disagree.
Did you talk about putting the building up front at all?
He did not. I did, but he did not. Well, I meant not putting it out. There's already buildings there, but reworking the buildings. That's all. There was no great discussion, in-depth discussion, because I don't know that much about it. And he really isn't thinking that way. So, I mean, I just wish there'd be a little more creativity in the thinking around what they're doing there, only because 1,700 people, 60% of voting people in the town had made it clear. And Enzo, I mean, even you have said to me that you'd prefer they don't build up there, but what are the options for us? So...
I said what?
You would prefer they don't build there, but given they own the land, what are the options? So, I mean, I don't know. I don't know the answer, obviously.
Yeah.
But I just bring this up because I was curious what the next step might be in the process, especially in terms of communicating. Because when we were out getting signatures for this, people just said, oh, what's going on in town? They had no idea what was going on. And I don't know any more than, than they know, but I think, you know, we used to have a monthly newspaper, and we don't anymore. And not everybody is on Facebook, and Facebook isn't always the most informative vehicle anyway. So I just think people want to know, and I just personally wanted to know if we knew what the next step was in terms of communicating to the citizens what the thinking is after the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One follow-up was Josh Antrim, a couple of weeks ago at an earlier meeting, suggested that the town look into the legality from the earlier bylaw from about 20 years ago that created the natural resource area, and thought that legally we should have an answer to that even before Northeastern submits any plans, you know? So I, I don't know if there's any follow-up and if that's being looked into on a legal basis.
We, yes. Board, the board agreed with Josh. I agree with Josh. We had a, an executive session at our last Board of Select meeting, the very next one after that comment that Josh raised, and brought our attorney in and talked about it amongst a group. So we are looking into it and preparing for that. I don't think that we can discuss where we ended up at this time. It's still being reviewed, but we are definitely preparing for it.
Roger Pazinski, 36 Swallow Cave Road. Yeah, my only question right now is try to get a little more detail as to the status of the survey. I was really happy that you folks put out the survey, and, and I don't have any, haven't heard anything back as to how many people... I, I don't have any, haven't heard anything back as to how many people filled it out. I know I did, um, but there was, it was quite a while ago, and, um, I assume the four of you control that survey information, so is it still open, or are you still waiting for more people to fill it out, or has it been sent out to have the data crunched, or, uh, and what would be the timeline for us to get feedback about that survey?
It, I think it's still open, I think you could still fill out an answer to it. The intent of the survey was to provide us some information about, um, how folks felt about the presentation, uh, you know, whether they were here or not, um, give them an opportunity to digest it and really give us some feedback as to, um, what they heard from Northeastern that night. It wasn't, um, we never really had a, a set date on releasing it. It's not, it's public information, we can, we can post the results, we just haven't, um, 'cause it wasn't the intent of the tool, but I could, we could post the results on the website. The results that we have, we could close it and post it.
Mr. Chairman?
Right.
I, I, I think that Mr. Posensky is right on target. I mean, people need to know this stuff. And I would say, get that out there, get, get the, the results of the survey out there. I would also say that we should give them the, the, um, results of the, um, the, uh, the assessment. What they come in at.
You know, again, our attorney has advised us that because that could potentially find its way into a courtroom or, you know, potential litigation, that we should not be releasing that at this time.
People want it. Public wants it. I, I have no problem giving it to them.
Yeah, it's a lot of public interest, and I, and I think, uh, um, you know, you, you've been very open, Tony, and we've, we've loved your spirit of openness. Uh, over the last, uh, couple of months, there's really been, uh, very little information coming out and so forth, and I, I think, yeah, at least, uh, releasing this, the survey, um, and, you know, hopefully all detail would be great. Uh, I think some people uh, wrote some, uh, subjective comments at the end of it, not just, you know, yes, no, yes, no, yes, no. And so, um, I think the public would like to see that, and it sounds like there's no reason why we shouldn't, so, uh, thank you very much.
Even if it's not a cutoff date, we can give the information that we have compiled.
Great, yeah, thank you.
Okay. Let's, let's finish this, we got business. Go ahead.
That's right. Thank you. Michelle Cappano, twenty-nine Ocean Street in Nahat. Um, just a couple of things. As you recall, seventeen hundred citizens signed that open letter last year, right? You hear it all the time, and it's very important to us. Not to me, but to the residents in this town. Mr. Barletta highlighted something important. One is the real estate assessment, and Mr. Burrell has said on several occasions he wants to release it. And I agree with Mr. Barletta, it is a tool in our toolbox, and if you decide to give that tool away, you will irreparably impact the town. And you keep advocating it, Mr. Burrell, and I don't understand why you wanna do that on the advice of your town administrator and town council. Um, there are other tools in that toolbox. The, um, wetlands protection bylaw that we passed last year is another tool, and you wanna repeal that. We can talk the merits of that separately, and we can talk about, um, the residents that were newly added to the jurisdiction, and how, um, we have, are very fortunate with a conservation commission. Resident volunteers are dedicated to helping, you know, people see through that process when they have to do construction. But I would ask that you think thoughtfully about the tools that we have, and there's lots of tools, including funding tools and outside sources, which you haven't even addressed regarding what we, what our actions might be. So, those are just things to consider, and, um, you know, we have a, a town administrator who's, who's juggling so many things, and I commend him, but I think one of the most entire things that he keeps saying is, we need to think about our tools and our toolbox. And, uh, he has brought that up several times, so I hope that you'll consider it.
Can I just rebut that, Michelle? It's Keeping the Hot Wild that wants it. Keeping the Hot Wild, the Preservation Trust, they, everybody wants, I've heard from Christian Bowder, I've heard from Peter Rogal, I've heard from all those people, they want that. They want the information.
So, let's clarify, let's, let's just clarify that, that, above that. Last year, private funds through residents donated over seventy thousand dollars to pay for the real estate assessment and gift that money to the town for that purpose. That purpose is to be an instrument for us to use at some point. It could be to our legal advantage. Now, there are difference of opinions, and they're residents, just like I am.
So, who represents the Keeping the Hot Wild? Is it you?
No.
Okay, well, because I'm hearing from all different people, I mean, they come down the garage, they say, we want that.
And several meetings ago, you.
Wild says they want it, Preservation Trust says they want it, so tell me, what, what?
Well, who owns the work product? The town and the hot, or the hot Preservation Trust, let legal counsel.
Well, sometimes I wonder.
Well, that's, that's the question you need to answer. Who owns the work product? We, Nahat Pres. Are you sure about that? I mean, I don't know, I haven't seen the legal agreements.
Tell me, sit.
So, I don't know what the legal agreement is.
Preservation Trust or Keeping the Hot Wild gave us the money, correct?
As I understand, yes.
Okay, so, once they gave us the money, who, who owns the money? Who hires, we, we were, we were told to hire.
You received a gift agreement. I don't know what the gift agreement.
Had an agreement, would you, would you like to see the agreement? I have it right here.
If you have the gift agreement, I'm happy to review it, but I'm not an attorney, so I would default to your town council to ask them. Based on the merits of the gift agreement and what you signed, who owns the work product? And I, certainly, I don't wanna waste any more of your time, we know you have a full agenda, items to go through. Um, I will caveat with this, several meetings ago, you had questions for Keeping the Hot Wild. If you do have questions, if you put them in writing and send them to us, we'll be happy to answer them, and then schedule a meeting with you and the town administrator to go through them.
So, let me ask you this, another question. I was approached by Keeping the Hot Wild to have a, a meeting, and they wanted to have two selectmen, two selectmen, and a bunch of people from Keeping the Hot Wild there, and I said, that's fine, but it has to be public. And I was told, absolutely no. I have it in writing, absolutely no, because.
When you say you have it in record, do you have oral record, a written record, text message, email?
I have, I save every one of my emails, and I have the.
Well, then you need to, if you wanna forward me the email.
And I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna get into that.
Then I think we're done, thank you.
Everybody needs to be transparent, Michelle, okay?
Right.
Everybody.
To wrap this up, pardon me. I spent eight meetings with Northeastern, with the town administrator, with our lawyer, eight. I stopped going out to meetings after that, after I was accused of having secret meetings at one of our selectmen's meetings. Only 'cause, uh, people in town thought I was gonna run for selectmen, so they wanted, you know, you gotta make Taylor look bad. Well, I'm not running. But the result of those meetings, and the town administrator, and our lawyer, was the December eleventh meeting. There was no transparency issues. Everything that we discussed and we pushed for, including the meeting date, was set up and said to you, the town, on December eleventh. So, and now since then, there has been no communication, we've been waiting to hear from them for a final, full version of what they're going to do. And we got stuck with budget and other stuff that we have to do. And I'll, I'll, another thing to go back with what I heard, this is from the minutes, and I wanted to make sure this was in the minutes, that in fact, I had a few of the Keeping the Hot Wild people agree with me. The East Point is, is zoned NR. To stop Northeastern University, all we have to do is enforce our bylaws. It should be at the planning board level, the Concom level, the business inspector, and the planning board. And that's what, what Alice has done with the maps, I hope is done at the planning board meeting, because it's, it's an eye-opener. And this, again, this is good stuff. Okay, next, I'm done with Citizens Forum. Uh, new business, appointment of town treasurer-collecta. Mr. Administrator?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We, uh, it's been a long process. We've, uh, posted the position, um, twice, uh, the first time we didn't get much, uh, response, um, so we put it back out, put it back out, we opened the position back up. And we got some more applications, um, a lot of, a lot of interest, uh, some qualified, some not qualified. We narrowed the, uh, pool of applicants down to three, and then two, and, um, had a second round of interviews, had reference checks, and ultimately, the person that, the, uh, treasurer that I'm recommending for appointment is a gentleman named Brendan Corrit. Um, and so this would be pending a background check, uh, his start date would be April first.
April first. Okay, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the town administrator's appointment of Brendan Corrit to fill the vacated position of treasurer-collecta pending a full background check.
Second the motion.
Uh, discussion. He calls you Antonio? Wow.
He, he really wanted the job.
Wow. I had, I, I had the, um, I was very fortunate to be part of the interview process. Um, he's, he's young, he's, I shouldn't say that word, he's very good, he will help the town. Um, and I'd like to spend some time and, and thank Kathy Famulari for all she's done. She really helped us out. I thanked her, and she said, well, you paid me anyway. And I said, well, that's Kathy, but thank you, Kathy, good job. Okay. Need a vote of discussion?
Yeah, I just, Tony, um, going through his resume, well-qualified. Three years well-qualified, and I think he'd be a welcome addition to your, uh, team. And I also like to thank Kathy for filling in, she, uh, she stepped up.
Tremendously.
Tremendously for us. That's all I have.
Further discussion?
Nope.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Thank you, Mr. Barletta.
Thank you.
Next, vote on annual town meeting cover photos. Let's, let's, let's just not do this.
Just as, as presented.
As, let's, okay.
I thought we decided already.
This is as presented, we did it by phone.
Well, I thought through, I had some, yeah, this is.
Well, we don't wanna say what it is.
No, no, not yet, but this is.
Top secret.
Top secret. Okay.
The idea here, just, you know, it's supposed to be a surprise.
Correct.
Uh, so it's not a transparency thing, but that's why we're, um, just gonna be voting it as presented to you.
As presented, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the two thousand eighteen annual town report covers as presented by the town administrator. I so moved that, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second it. Further discussion?
Nope.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Approve YMCA of Metro North five K road race for May eighteenth. Start time, eight thirty AM.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the annual YMCA five K stride on May eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, from eight thirty to eleven AM at the Life Saving Station in Nahat. I'll second the motion for discussion.
Discussion. Thing in hearing, none?
Discussion.
Oh, discussion, go ahead.
May eighteenth, is that a SADI?
Wait a minute, we got it right here.
It is.
It is a SADI. I wanna make sure that since that's gonna be coming out of the, um, Coast Guard station, we have adequate police officers, the details for that.
Okay. They did, it did go through a, uh.
The check, I see that. Did the police chief sign off on this?
Yep.
And it's bef, bef, usually before beach time.
No, I understand, but it's just, it's just a very difficult area, that Coast Guard, the traffic coming in and out.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
I'm sorry, I'm reading the.
Declare nineteen eighty-one Mack fire truck as surplus equipment.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Board of Selectmen vote to declare the surplus for the following. Number one, a nineteen eighty-one Mack fire truck, uh, the VIN number, and, uh, I'm not gonna read the VIN number, but that's the old fire truck. The new one's already here.
I'll second it. The discussion? Discussion.
None.
I think the, uh, one of our, uh, somebody up there wants to buy it for their, their kid.
Park the fire truck in the, uh.
It's pretty, it's pretty big. Good, good truck to drive around in.
The, the other day, the, um, fire department had a ceremony dedicating the new, um, or bringing the new engine onboard, and they talked a little bit about this old engine, and it actually came from New York.
Right.
Um, in two thousand and four. And apparently, it was covered in New York Yankee stickers when it arrived in two thousand and four. When we beat them in the World Series, our police department, I mean, our fire department respectfully uh, sent those back to the station that this came, that the, uh, that the truck came from.
That was a nine eleven truck, too.
Yeah, uh, it's served the town well.
Yeah, that's a, it's a, it's a, you know. Those old diesels are great. New ones are not so good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Request buyback of cemetery plot, William Martin.
Okay, I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the buyback of cemetery plot from William Martin. Second.
Discussion.
Nope, I think it's a good deal. I mean, we, we can always use the space.
Okay.
Um, I, I think Billy and Kathleen are living in California now, so.
Further discussion?
I appreciate that.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Approve one-day liquor license for Nahat Veterans Association, multiple dates.
I mo.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the one-day liquor license for Nahat Veterans Association on the following dates. March sixteenth, May fourth, May twenty-ninth, June fourteenth, twenty-first, and November eleventh.
I'll second that. Discussion.
I wanna make sure that the, um, Legion's having, uh, St. Patty's Day on March sixteenth. Usually it's a nice time. Tickets are twenty dollars, it would be a nice take, people support the Legion.
Can you buy them at the door, would you?
Yeah, I think you can, yeah, there's no problem.
Good.
I just wanna, uh, thank the Veterans Association and Peter.
Predescent.
Yeah, in the, in the past, we've approved these liquor licenses one at a time throughout the year, and there's a, it's a ton of paperwork, and it's just, it's actually timely administratively, and we worked together, um, over the winter to put this together as a collective one-time, um, request. So, I wanna thank him for the amount of, for the time he put into it to help us out and make this, uh, a quicker process.
He was right on the ball with the email, too. That was nice. Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Nice. Town administrator report, please.
Um, I have on here listed, uh, town meeting warrant and budget development strategy. I'm actually gonna postpone till, to the next Board of Selectmen meeting. Uh, we, um, have been working with, uh, the FinCom, um, regularly over the last few weeks. We are putting some final touches together. I've been trying to attend as many events as possible around town to, um, inform the residents of our financial situation in town, and, um, you know, the purpose of the override. And I'm gonna continue to do so. I hope to have a, uh, one or two public meetings here at the town hall, during the week or on the weekend in April, uh, as we approach April town meeting, so to, uh, give people an, uh, an additional opportunity to understand the book that they receive in the mail, uh, before coming to town meeting, and the importance of the vote. So, uh, just postpone until the next Board of Selectmen meeting.
And the next board meeting will be in fact the twenty-eighth of February.
March.
What'd I say, February? Oh, gosh, March. Um, we have to make sure that we open and put in all. We have to make sure that we open and put in all the warrant articles, because they go to print, right?
Right.
Three, four days later?
Right, they have to go to the printer by the 1st of April-
1st of April, okay.
-in order to reach residents 14 days in advance.
So, and the potential on the 28th is for, not a potential, we want the Coast Guard Housing Committee here for-
They're actually meeting right now downstairs, and I ran down and let them know that we're going to be meeting on the 28th.
They were okay with that?
They were okay with that, and I will, I asked them to just keep in contact with me. We could, if it's, if possible, for them to have a recommendation for a warrant article, I'll have something drafted, so we can quickly put it in if it, if it's ready. And if it's not, then we don't have to worry about it. But I think they would appreciate the extra time anyways.
Okay. Okay. Oh, you want to talk? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I want to congratulate you, Tony, making the extra effort to go around to the various organizations and present your budget. The feedback was excellent. You've done an excellent job putting on a slide, going through the special town meeting, the override, and the budget, and I want to commend you for that.
Thank you.
That's all I can. I would agree. You've done a great job.
It's-
And you've kept us in the loop, which is amazing for us.
I appreciate that.
Appreciate it.
But, you know, for me, it's, it's essential that, you know, folks in town have an opportunity to understand the budget and the financial situation, because it's a very important decision that they will be making at town meeting and the day of the vote. So I'm just trying to educate them as much as possible and get, get out there as much as I can, so people understand, you know, where we are and, and what we're looking to do.
Ongoing business? Thank you, Mr. Town Administrator. Ongoing business, Mr. Valena?
I have-
Do you have any business?
No, I'm all set. I'm sure there's a couple things I'm forgetting.
Closing announcements? Closing announcements? Closing arguments?
Oh.
Any arguments you wanted to have? No?
Marty wanted me to let everybody know that he's been using his own car, his own vehicle, to pick up litter on the streets, and he's doing a good job at it. He had himself a new car, so he wanted me to let people know that he's using his own vehicle to do this. So there you have it.
I guess that's a closing announcement.
There you go.
Marty does a great job.
He does.
He does a great job. There's, unlike other communities, Nahant, it's very rare to see, you know, how, we have such a clean community. And, you know, Marty, along with the rest of the DPW, they do a great job for us.
Also, just my announcement, the DPW on the big storm, the foot, they did a great job. Actually, they wake me up all the time when there's a manhole they hit every single time in front of my neighbor's house. They hit it every time. It's because it sticks up. They, as soon as it started snowing, they were out there, but they should have been out there, because when we get up, the streets were really bare, and that was a foot of snow. So they did a great job.
We need to look at and have the public work, start identifying the potholes around town. There's a service they bring in that, you know, usually not only do their pothole, but they cut a square, and they really do a nice, fine job in these streets. We've had a tough winter, and there's quite a few potholes, you know, that even on the roadway coming into town, up by Little Nahant, major ones, we've got to, we've got to designate those areas and get them in here. I hope the winter's over. I'm pretty sure it is, but you don't know. But I mean, I just, the potholes have become a priority.
I just have one more.
Sure.
The 19th, there'll be a, might correct, Kristen? Kristen just texted me. Wetlands Regulations Bylaw meeting at 7:00 p.m. So that's Tuesday?
Yep.
19th?
Good. Thank you, Kristen.
The planning board's meeting the same night, I guess.
Conservation Commission on the 19th at 7?
Downstairs.
Downstairs. And the planning boards, yeah, the same night, I guess.
Yeah.
So it's downstairs.
At the same time?
They're going to speak on the, the planning board's supposed, I don't know what their agenda is, I can just tell you what I'm hearing, that they're going to speak on the natural resource-
Yeah, what I had said.
Let's connect.
But that's good.
I know the finance committee's supposed to be meeting that night, too, so-
Busy night.
Might need to do it up here, if this, if this space is available.
Peggy's gonna be down there.
Okay, well, I defer to, yeah, I'll defer to Peggy, then.
I think the conservation should have priority over the finance committee.
We got enough space for everyone.
I owe you one. No, I owe you, I owe you one, okay?
You are a troublemaker.
No, I just take, you know, they're not going our way, so, so it doesn't matter, but we'll, we'll take it right on town floor.
Okay, gentlemen. Motion adjourned.
Well, wait, we want to move, we want to-
What about going to executive session?
No, but we've got, yeah, but we've got to have, open the town warrant.
No, we're skipping next, next-
That's going to be the 28th.
Next meeting.
You are going to put that off.
Yeah, we'll put it off till the 28th.
We can open it tonight and just leave it open. It doesn't matter.
If somebody has an article they want to put on, they will put it out.
Is there any other articles we need to put in?
We'll know on the 28th better.
If they do, we're going to put it on.
Motion adjourned.
Aye, second it.
I'll make a motion adjourned.
Those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. 7:58.